Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I want to ask for a moment of silence for Robert Lundberg, who was a council member from January of eighty-four through December eighty-six, one term. He passed away on August twenty-third. He was born and raised in Walden, New York, graduated from Drew University. Not only he met the love of his life, his wife, Wilma, known as Billy Lundberg, but they also fell in love with Madison at that point. Lived here for forty-five years, raising her two children. He served our country as a Marine in World War II, and then Korea. His volunteer work in Madison included working on his zoning board, as Billy Lundberg also did, his wife, planning board. He coached several teams in Madison Little League, as we have Little League here, and served as the president of the Little League. He was a longtime member of the golf club, serving on the board and serving as president. Served on the board at Grace Counseling Center. And also volunteered for dozens of years at Drew and was honored by the Distinguished Service Award. And was recognized by the Madison JC as his man of the year. He was an accomplished athlete, gaining a scholarship to Drew, lettered in baseball, basketball, was drafted by the old St. Louis Browns, the major leagues as a shortstop. And he is part of the Drew University Hall of Fame. He was predeceased by his wife, Billy, married for sixty-six years. Survived by his daughter, Barbara, son Eric, and four grandchildren, eight grandchildren. So we want to take a moment to recognize Bob Lundberg and his service to community and his thoughts to his family. And also, let's take a moment to recognize those who died eighteen years ago on September eleventh, and those first responders who have died since then from the lasting effects of that terrible day. Thank you. I have a motion for the executive minutes of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All been discussed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion for the regular minutes of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all, as we get back into the real part of the year. It's been a long time since we've met. We had only one meeting in August, and it was a five-month, five Monday month, so adds to the longer time in between. So a lot has happened, so let me catch up, and we've got some presentations to do. But just in case you haven't heard the news...[222.12][222.12](laughter) And for those who can't see the small print out there, and I know it was no secret to those who live in Madison, those that are here, that we are recognized as the top town in the state to live in. And that is out of five hundred and sixty-five municipalities, so that is something to be very proud of. And it is a great team effort that makes that happen. I want to thank our council here, our Board of Education for the leadership those two bodies give to our borough and the school district. As we see our fire department, fire, police, our DPW, all the borough employees working so hard, our volunteers that make things like the Little League happen, our teachers in the schools, the volunteers that run many of the organizations, or show up for May Day, the merchants, the Chamber of Commerce, and of course, all sixteen thousand residents that have made this all possible. I would love to write a personal note to all sixteen thousand, but I've got a busy schedule, so if you haven't got a copy of it, you can look up it online or track it down, because it's a great article and great to be recognized. A few minutes ago, we did a moment of silence for September eleventh, and as we know, that we lost Madison residents on that day. And in memory of those that we lost on nine eleven, we started tradition last year, and we will do it again this year. We'll be sounding the horn, that's in the clock tower of Hartley Dodge, was originally the fire horn. So at eight forty-six, it will be sounded for the time when the plane hit the north tower, nine oh three for when a plane hit the south tower, nine thirty-seven for when a plane crashed into the Pentagon, and at ten oh three, when Flight ninety-three was taken down, saving the possible Capitol or the White House and lost lives there. So you'll be hearing the horns at those times on the eleventh. Want to recognize the YMCA, because on August twenty-eighth, the Y held groundbreaking for expansion that will include a new pool, gym, and expanded fitness. Congratulate the Y on their groundbreaking and the continued service to the Madison community, another slice of what makes us one of the top communities, or the top community in the state to live in.
Yeah, number one.
Also want to bring attention to the fact that September is suicide prevention month, and it's very important that we look up and find everything we know about suicide, because it's certainly a preventable death when people can step in. In two thousand and sixteen, there were forty-five thousand individuals died by suicide, leaving behind their friends, family, to navigate the tragedy of the loss. And in many cases, families and friends affected by a suicide loss are left in the dark, and we need to provide that support. If you ever know anyone in crisis, or you are in crisis, call the National Suicide Hotline at one eight hundred two seven three talk. That was eight hundred two seven three eight two five five. And if anyone has an opportunity, I got certified myself in it, mental health first aid. There is, we always think about traditional first aid, but mental health first aid gives people the skills to step in and to prevent a suicide. If we can put the stigmatism aside of mental health, we can save a life. And I also want to bring attention to the event that will be happening on September twenty-first at Cougar Field, the Out of Darkness Walk, that will bring recognition and support to those that are touched by suicide and programs that will prevent suicide. The program registration's at four thirty, and the program starts at five thirty at Cougar Field on Central Avenue. The employee for the month of September is Chris McDougall of the Department of Public Works, for his dedication and commitment in designing and fabricating innovative tools for the water department, making it easier and safer to operate valves and saving the department time and money. I'm interested to see some of those innovative tools. It's great to see creativity. And anniversaries, if you see these employees either out in the town or in this building, Lieutenant Joe Longo of the Police Department, twenty-year anniversary on the seventh. And Donna Carey of our Water Lake Building, also twenty years on September thirteenth. And now I'm going to come down to make some recognitions here. Chief, want to come forward and bring anyone else who want to come up, and I will call up our volunteers in just a second. Chief, what is the total number of years of volunteer service we're recognizing tonight? I'm putting you on the spot.
We're just under two hundred.
Just under two hundred and fifty years combined of these volunteers that we're coming up here. Ed Nun Senior, please come forward. We'll be giving certificates in just a second, but a little background on Ed. Eighteen years as a volunteer. Joined the Hose Company in two thousand and one, a Navy veteran, worked for the Borough of Madison in the Sewer Department, retiring many years ago. Ed responds, and still responds to major calls, and assists with the fire scene accountability, and helps at fire department events. Thank you, Ed. Vito Terranova. Thirty-three years. It was, not only was the thirty-three years surprising, but the fact that nineteen eighty-six was thirty-three years ago. It seems like it was yesterday.[638.41][638.41](laughter) So Vito joined the Hose Company in nineteen eighty-six, achieved exempt status in ninety-nine five, an Army veteran. Vito retired from Exxon in Florence Park many years ago, and you may recognize him Monday through Friday, as he works as the sidewalk sweeper for us in downtown, keeping our downtown looking great. And Vito still helps at fire department events and attends all the company meetings. So Vito, thank you. Neil Simonelli. Forty-four years. Neil joined the Hook and Ladder Company in nineteen seventy-five. He achieved exempt status in nineteen eighty-five. He's still active within the Relief Association, helps at fire department events, and attends the company meetings. Also an Army veteran, and many will remember, he owned and operated Neil's Deli on Park Avenue for many years before retiring. But he's not completely retired, as we know. Tony Ginoni. Forty-seven years. Tony joined the Hook and Ladder Company in nineteen seventy-two. He achieved exempt status in nineteen eighty-two. He's active with the Relief Association, helps at fire department events, and attends the company meetings. Tony is also an Army veteran, and the common theme of service is always in here. Retired many years ago from Sebagagi Pharmaceuticals in Summit. Tony, thank you. Carl Weiskirber. Fifty years. So Carl joined Hook and Ladder in nineteen sixty-nine, achieved exempt status in nineteen seventy-eight, served as the president of the Hook and Ladder Company, and currently president of the Relief Association. Carl retired many years ago from Pipe Fitters Union. Thank you, Carl. And our last one, Jay Hagerich. Now we're getting to some real numbers. Fifty-three years. Jay joined the Hose Company in nineteen sixty-six. He achieved exempt status in nineteen seventy-four and was hired in the career division in nineteen sixty-seven. Jay retired in nineteen ninety-nine, has remained active in the Relief Association, along with assisting in fire department events, attending company meetings. Jay also served in the Army Reserves prior to joining the fire department. Thank you. So while we have you up here... Present these certificates, and it says right here, Mayor and Council, appreciate your commitment and thank you for your valuable dedication and service to safety and residence of the Borough of Madison. So we truly appreciate it. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
And then we're going to get Paul Morgan to come up and cue up the video.
Okay, just a few words. This is the elders of our department here. They do come to all our meetings, they show up at events, they help out, and they keep the history of Madison alive. Even though Robbie Dunn is our local historian, he's always picking their brains as to what's this, who's this, in this photograph, to try and keep the history, and to keep the history alive, so. But they share their stories of yesteryear, they tell it how it used to be, how they did it, and they keep the interest and they keep the young kids going, so. Gentlemen, I thank you. I've had the pleasure of serving with you all at one point in my career, and I look forward to serving with you in the future too, so thank you.
Now we have a lot of young people in the audience, and so we'll let you guys sit down, and what we're going to show right now... So I think this is a good reminder that fifty years of service starts very easily by stepping forward and saying, yes, I will help. And that's where it all starts. So Paul Morgan, a Madison resident, has put together, working with the fire department, a little video to help recruit more volunteers. So Paul, would you like to say a few words and then run it?
I just want to say thank you. I'm grateful to live in this town and for the services we have, particularly the fire department. I had the opportunity to call them once, and they, it came so fast, it, I feel like I hung up the phone and I could hear them coming. And they pretty much saved my house, and so I'm glad to be able to thank them and make a small contribution. And thanks to Michael and Jim and Mayor Conley, and my wife and son, Georgia, who are here.
So this video will be going out to help recruit. And as a quick reminder, Madison is fairly rare in the fact that we have a combined career, fire department, and volunteer. And so, please, step forward. Speaking of stepping forward, can I have the, our U-11 Little League team with the coaches, please step forward? And Ken, are you here also? Ken Ware?
Right here.
Oh, come on up, Ken. Thank you. All right, this is a very special day.
I've got a fine spot for me here. Part of the team, let me come forward here a second here. There we go.
So you guys had quite a summer, haven't you? Our first state championship in forty years. And what we, we like to recognize excellence, and we've done it for a lot of high school teams. This is, we might be one of our younger teams that we've done this for. But to put this in perspective, usually, the team we recognize goes out with each player having a certificate, but on top of getting a certificate, you're also going to get a proclamation for the team, not from the borough, but from the United States House of Representatives, through Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill. So let me read this quickly, and it covers a lot, what's in my certificates also. "The eleventh congressional district of the great state of New Jersey honors and congratulates the two thousand and nineteen Madison Little League eleven U All-Star team upon the occasion of the two thousand and nineteen state championship. And whereas Madison eleven U All-Star won the District One title for the second year in a row, and the Madison U All-Star team won the two thousand and nineteen Section One championship, avenging its loss in the finals of the prior season, and the All-Star team was undefeated in state tournament, winning eight straight games on its way to its first state championship in forty years. And whereas the Madison eleven U All-Star team competed in Eastern Regional Tournament of Champions and finished third against the best teams in the two thousand and nineteen eleven U Little League, now therefore be it known, the undersigned member of the United States Congress, the Honorable Mikey Sherrill of the eleventh congressional district, hereby honors and congratulates the two thousand and nineteen Madison Little League eleven U All-Star team upon its occasion of its two thousand and nineteen state championship. Very proud of you guys." Now each of you have the Madison certificate, and then you have your individual residential one right behind you. And I won't go through all the words, because most of this is covered, but it takes, it's, baseball is a team effort, and led by great coaches, and we're working together. And so we thank you and congratulate you on extraordinary effort, your outstanding teamwork, dedication, and perseverance. And we recognize the manager, Glenn Randall, coaches Greg Haviland and Mark Sedano for their leadership in training and coaching. You have made Madison very proud. You might have been the team that put us in the number one spot. We might have been number two until that championship. So I'm going to call your name, and I want you to come up, and then tell me what your primary position is. Brady Sedano.
My primary position is either second base or pitcher.
Carter Ferris.
I play right field.
Luke McQuire.
I play catcher.
Gavin Randall.
I play third base.
Liam Melvin.
I pitch.
Lorenzo Mazzelli.
I play third base.
Chris Vaughn.
I play first base.
Jack McGlaughlin.
I play left field.
Andrew Haviland.
I play center field.
Nolan Keane.
Left field and bench.
Quinn O'Rourke.
I'm a PO.
James Donar.
I play left field and bench.
Just for the players I mentioned that play bench, my youngest brother was on the Madison Little League team forty-plus years ago that made it to the regionals, and so they were one round away from the Little League World Series. He saw very little action, except for when he was on the bench, he talked to the newspaper quite a bit, so, and so he got quite a bit of coverage in the paper, so it's all a team effort. And from the, we have certificates from Congress, from Mikey Sherrill, for manager Glenn Randall. Coach Greg Haviland. And Coach Mark Sedano. Ken, do you want to say a few words, and then we'll hand it over to the...
Just to give you a sense of accomplishment of what these boys accomplished this season, some of the towns that they went up against, like Brick, population of seventy thousand, which means they have far bigger pool to choose from. There was some rough pool play for these boys, but you know what? They always figured out a way to come back and win. They provided Madison Little League and the town of Madison with an unbelievable summer, and we're very proud of them.
Ken, I would echo those sentiments as well. This team has so much heart. I think the defining moment for the team was after two losses in pool play. We took a pretty significant loss against Randolph, and then the next game, we actually lost back-to-back. So after that, I asked the team, I said, what kind of players, what kind of team do you want to be? And I would say, from that moment on, I just saw something in their eyes, that they were just, you know, determined, determined to bounce back from any kind of adversity that we saw during the games. So I would say, you know, with all that hard work, the starting point in the winter, all that hard work in the spring, and many, many months, many, many games, all that hard work pays off. And when you get those successful results, you get the accolades and you get the recognition. So Mayor, appreciate the recognition for all the hard work that these guys have put in, and it's just a privilege to coach them.
Well done, guys. Thank you very much. And looking pretty sharp tonight, too. They're looking great. Thank you.
All right, guys.
Now, you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we won't take it personally if you leave. We do ask you to keep quiet, keep the sound down in the hallway, because we have to keep the doors open, and it echoes quite a bit. Thank you.
Bye, Ed.
Thank you, Chief.
Have you picked, Tom?
Yeah, this is more like it.
So the boys and Wayne taking care of you? The police and Wayne taking good care of you? So you're really retired now?
At least for another week.
Hey, Mel.
What were you going to do?
You know how to clear a room. See what... You know how to clear a room.
All right. Let's get to reports from committees. Public Safety, Council President Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Take time getting your notes together, so we can get the quiet.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
From the Police Department, Lieutenant Longo reported that we had a smooth start to the school year. He was campaigning when he heard sirens and saw a car with front-end damage and two flat tires come down the road. He called the dispatch desk with the location and description and stayed on the scene until the Madison Police Department arrived and made an arrest. And finally, from the Fire Department, the Fire Department today assisted successfully with the Morristown Fire Department to put out a fire at a commercial kitchen on Speedway Avenue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Finance Department, there's been additional cross-training occurring in the Finance Department with the payroll and accounts payable, staff helping support utility billing. Work on the 2020 budget has already started, believe it or not. Administration and Engineering have started work on the five-year capital plan, and meetings have been set up with the various department heads to discuss their operating and capital needs for 2020. The Finance Department annually updates the schedule of assets and other information that is submitted to the Joint Insurance Fund. That's been ongoing for the last couple of months, and that information is going to be completed and submitted this week. A report on the performance of the utilities through the end of August is being prepared and will be forwarded to the Council later in the months. The United States Treasury Department, the Internal Revenue Service have issued a new W-4 withholding form, which will be implemented early next year. The Payroll Department has researched the topic and is prepared to implement the program. So it's going to be interesting to see what this actually is, W-4. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First, from the Electric Department, they have been helping Public Works and the Police Department with trimming overgrown branches and bushes that are obstructing school and crosswalk signs throughout the town. As a reminder, if you have trees or shrubs adjacent to public sidewalks or signs, please make sure that they are clear at all times. And second, in late August, the crew had two outages, one near Shumpike and Noah, the other on Lathrop. Both took approximately two to two and a half hours to clear, so great job by the Electric Department. And from the Water Department, they are starting, about to start their state mandated hydrant flushing in the next two weeks. Other work is expected to continue through the end of October. It will help to ensure that the 600-plus fire hydrants that we have in town are in good working order in case they're ever needed. Areas that have high traffic will be done overnight. The rest of the system will be flushed during the day. In case a hydrant's being flushed in your area, you may notice low pressure, discoloration of water, or bubbles in the water. This is just a temporary condition, and the best way to alleviate this is to run an outside faucet or laundry sink until the water clears. We appreciate your understanding in this important work that they'll be doing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Bar...
Thank you, Mayor. DPW continues to maintain the borough vehicles and equipment, so it stays in top shelf and available to do all the work they do around town. Watering the plants, I don't know what it is, but I think the planters this year were really stunning, and I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that DPW was watering them on a very consistent basis, so I'd like to thank them for making Madison downtown. Maybe that was the one that put us over. They've also been landscaping borough parks and fields and cleaning up and recycling. As far as, no, paved potholes, the Engineering Department wrote they're starting the water main replacement and drainage improvements on Kennedy Place next week. They are resurfacing and continue to resurface and pave a number of streets. NJDOT re-imbursement request for the both phases of the Greenwood Avenue were submitted based on the approved payment testing. And then, September 18th, there's going to be a complete Streets Committee meeting, and a pedestrian safety Street Smarts program endorsed by TransOptions in Morris County is being implemented in Madison in conjunction with back-to-school programs this fall. And what basically we're doing is, we're recognizing that we need to make Madison's streets safe for everybody. They have to be safe for people to walk or bike, but they also have to be safe for cars to go as well. I mean, everybody has a responsibility to use our streets carefully so as to keep anything terrible happening. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Let's have Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, on September 11th, a meeting of volunteers and three master gardeners will be held at the Senior Center to plant gardens around the Senior Center. They are in the process of re-establishing a calling system for senior shodds by engaging more and additional members. The Senior Center itself, their Senior Center picnic will be held on September 25th at noon. All are invited to attend. From the Director of Business Development and the Downtown Development Commission report, Restaurant Week is planned for Sunday, October 6th through Friday, October 11th, in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. The event will feature a contest for diners. Diners who submit five receipts dated between October 6th and 11th by October 19th will be eligible to win a $100 Madison gift check. Bottle Hill Day is scheduled for Saturday, October 5th. There is still time to participate. sponsorship application packets are available on rosenet.org. Please visit the Madison Farmers Market, as I do every Thursday, between Cook Avenue and Main Street from 2:00 to 7:00, every Thursday through October 24th. In addition to the great lineup of food vendors and others, the market features weekly live musical performances. From the Chamber of Commerce, the Council and public are invited to the networking event at the Park Avenue Club on Wednesday, September 25th. The club is hosting and offering open bar, light fare, and a tour of the facility upon request. The Madison Car Show is Saturday, October 5th. The main sponsor is the Madison Tire and Auto Repair. From the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the museum will be hosting its annual benefit on September 27th at Park Avenue Club on 184 Park Avenue at a cost of $150. MACA, the Madison Swings event will be held at the Junior School on Saturday, September 21st at 7:00 PM. The concert is $50, and the concert and party, after-party, at the Community Arts Center is $75. More information is available on Facebook page, Madison Arts and Culture Alliance. For the Madison Community Arts Center, I'm going to defer that until we have a little talk from Eric Haven in a few minutes. Recreation Advisory Committee, the fall schedule is officially underway at Madison Junior Football. Junior Field Hockey and the Madison Soccer Club have kicked off their practice and game schedules. Several returning rental groups will be hosted this fall, including U.S. Sports Institute and the Morris Elite Soccer. Rental revenue for the year now stands at just over $30,000, despite numerous weather cancellations and the expansion of our primary programs. Dates have been set for three fall tournaments at the MRC. Junior Field Hockey will host their pre- and postseason events on September 8th and November 10th, respectively. That was yesterday. Additionally, the Madison Soccer Club will play host to the Parsippany Pride Soccer Tournament Columbus Day weekend, with games on both the MRC fields during, throughout the day on October 12th and 13th. Every possible opportunity to improve the fields is being pursued. Anticipated fall 2019 projects include, but are not limited to, regrading the infield at Lucy D. Myrtle and Howard, adding additional safety netting at MRC One, and top dressing and seating the outfield at both Rosedale Baseball Fields. Barring unexpected issues at other fields, we plan to rest Niles Park and the ice rink fields for the fall season. In the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, the fitness crawl is planned for September 15th from 9:15 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., followed by a reception at the Madison Community Arts Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. The flu clinic dates have been scheduled for Wednesday, October 1st, and Monday, October 21st, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Civic Center. No appointments are necessary. Please bring your Medicare card if applicable and wear short sleeves if possible. The vaccine is regular dose, quadrivalent, four strains of protection, not the high dose. Schedule will be available on rosenet.org. The fall season brings events that may include food products and their sale or distribution. The public is reminded that any type of food distribution or sale in the borough may require a temporary food license, an inspection, and approval from the Health Department. Please call the Health Department for further information. And the next regular Board of Health meeting is Tuesday, September 17th at 7:30 p.m. in the Health Department Office, 28 Walnut Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received an email dated August 13th from resident John Larkin regarding the cable franchise process.
Thank you. And now we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion from the public. This one is limited to the two agenda discussions or any of the resolutions. There'll be a time later in the meeting when you can comment on other things, and also for ordinances, there'll be hearings for those. So our agenda discussions are the Madison branding and logo, you'll see that shortly, and also the Madison Community Arts Center presentation. And these are the following resolutions that are part of the consent agenda that you may comment, but you also will now know what's in the consent agenda. Resolution 253, resolution authorizing submission of application for diversion for the Morris County Open Space Farmland Floodplain Protection and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. This is related to the meeting or obligation for affordable housing using the land in the diversion. 254, approving raffle licenses for the PTSO Madison High School. 255, approving a bingo license for the same organization. 256 is accepting donated landscaping maintenance for Condorsow Way Park. This is the World War I Memorial, and also where we have the veteran pavers that Davis and Sons Landscaping has taken that park on. I want to recognize there's several little mini-parks that have been taken on by local landscapers, and thank those that do that. And anyone interested in taking on one, please let us know. 257 is appointing our 2019-2020 school year crossing guards. 258 is pulled, we anticipate that will come back, and the next one after the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee has a chance to review it. 259 is approving a shared service agreement with, for confined space rescue agreement with the Borough Forum Park, and it's a fee of $3,000 plus any direct costs that are incurred. 260 is confirming change order number two to MBT Contracting for Madison Electric Storage Building, and this is the amount of $12,931, and is funded through ordinances one and two, one and six, 2019. 261, resolution authorizing renewal of agreement for Employment Assistance Program for, through the Atlantic Health System. 262, awarding contract Performance Trailers, Inc. of Flanders for the amount of $34,911 for, this is for trailer and accessories for the Fire Department. This is funded through ordinance 25-2019. 263, ordinance, resolution authorizing Madison Area YMCA 5K Drawl de Farms on September 20th, 2019. Resolution 264, supporting the Madison Environmental Commission Birds and Breakfast Walk that will occur on Saturday, September 28th. 265 is authorizing special event permit to Rotary Club using parking lot number one for their semi-annual shredding event. 266 is award of contract to Vigilant Solutions for purchase of license plate recognition hardware installation and setup. This is the amount of $21,500. This is funded through the Police Outside Duty Trust Fund. So those are the resolutions. Anyone wishing to comment any of those or agenda items, please step forward, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and remember that you're, please try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you an extra one-minute grace period. So state your name, your address, and the resolution or agenda item you're speaking to.
Tom Harland Poudis, 27 Palmer Road, and I have a question and a comment about ordinance 46-2019 with regards to your appropriating money for the Department of Public Works Recycling Center project. I'm not sure what that entails, so I assume you're going to elaborate.
Yep.
During your discussion. But I know that there is a movement in the borough now to be even more environmentally friendly than we are with regards to banning plastic bags or some single-use takeout containers. So I'd like to just comment that, from my observations around the borough, I don't think we have enough recycling areas for residents to actually put recycling. I don't know if that has any...
Yeah, it's not related to any of those. That's why I'm kind of signaling, but...
Is it for yard waste recycling?
Well, it is related, yeah. If there's any else on the agenda items, then we'll get an answer to that and all.
Anything else is great.
Okay. So...
I didn't even need three minutes, so I can carry them over for later.
In case you have to leave, I'll have Jim cover the reason for the ordinance.
I actually do have to go for a soccer pickup.
The recycling, the funds for the recycling center for a center that will be able to accept the combing load containers, cardboard, styrofoam, and electric recycling in a way where you don't have to enter into the DPW yard. It'll be a more secure area, a safer area, and then we're hoping to have it staffed and open and available more for residents during more available, more popular times.
And, Tom, you also, one thing I forgot to cover in my comments related to single-use plastic bag. I have been working with the area mayors, and we have an agreement and concept that Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Borough of Madison, and Morris Township in this month, and we're looking at our next meeting, will be introducing ordinances to ban single-use plastic bags. And this is consistent with the ordinance, that's model ordinance from Anjack. And so we wanted a concerted effort, so there's no confusion for the residents as they go to shop right versus stop and shop and so on. So that will be, you'll be seeing that in the next meeting. Anyone else wishing to comment on things on the agenda?
My name is Rachel Ehrlich, 252 Kings Road. I'd like to comment on Resolution 257, the appointment of crossing guards. My son recently started kindergarten at Kings Road School, and so I want to take this occasion to point out that, you know, we are now doubly appreciative for the series of crossing guards that man the busy intersections and a series of crossings all along Kings Road. I think the fact that we're able to provide a number of crossing guards, I recently learned we have 25 crossing guards in the employment of the borough. Compare that to Morris Township, who has two crossing guards. You could say that we have done an exemplary job funding safety measures that protect our school kids on the way to school. And I understand that Resolution 257 is kind of a routine matter being handled through the consent resolution, but I think it's the consent agenda, but it's a great opportunity to point out that our utility surplus allows us to fund compensation of 25 crossing guards in town, and I think that's remarkable. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Kathy Daly, 20 West End Avenue. I just want to take an opportunity to lend my support to Resolution 266-2019, which is, it's very exciting, I think, to have some parking hardware and software that's going to make our, help us resolve some of our parking issues that have been a perennial challenge for Madison. So I'm really excited about it, and I'm looking forward to seeing it in action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is tied to the new software program that we're launching also.
Hi, my name is Susan Petracco. I live at 15 Lorain Road, and I want to speak to Resolution 253, I believe it is. I apologize, I don't... With regard to low-income housing?
Yes.
I also want to apologize that I missed the scoping meeting last month. I did call in today for the minutes that are not yet on the website, but they're not available. So I come sort of not knowing the whole scope of things. But to the best of my understanding, all of Madison's low-income housing is in the Central Avenue School District?
No.
No? No. Okay, is the majority of it there?
No.
No? Well, then I apologize for that, but I do know that Central Avenue is the only Title One school district in the area, as opposed to... available. So I come sort of not knowing the whole scope of things. But to the best of my understanding, all of Madison's low-income housing is in the Central Avenue School District?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Is the majority of it there?
No.
No? Well, then I apologize for that. But I do know that Central Avenue is the only Title I school district in the area as opposed to Kings Road and Torrey J. And I'm concerned that they're going to put potentially another 40 units in that school district.
Thank, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that comment. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we close this part of the meeting. We move on to Madison branding and logo presentation.
What do I need to give this? Xanax or something? Do you okay? Okay, that's... We'll introduce ourselves, Barbara.
Oh, yes. That would be...
Talk to the microphone.
Into the microphone.
Talk to the microphone. And if you want a wireless, we can make that available.
Nope, that's, that's okay. Thank you for having us. My name is Victoria Vitarelli-Merson. I've lived in Madison for 11 years. I lived in Manhattan before I moved out here and I worked for the New York Jets at the time, so that is what relocated me. And I'm partially responsible for building what is the Atlantic Health Training Center as well as what is now MetLife Stadium. I was head of marketing there. I've worked in marketing all my, for all of my career, I continue to do so, I love it. And when we were asked, Chris and I were asked to help out on the Madison Project and rebranding, it was, it was perfect for us. So I've been doing this work for a long time. So thank you for having us.
Hi, I'm Chris Pfeifer. I'm almost seven-year, 17-year Madison resident, and I have two boys in the school system. And I've been a graphic designer with my own practice for about 20 years now. Previously worked for a toy company before that and worked in advertising in New York. And I've enjoyed getting involved with some local design projects that I hadn't done in the past, so, and enjoyed working with the committee to come up with a new brand identity for Madison that we're going to be showing you guys.
While we're pulling this up, as you know, we had a consultant, Urbanomics, come in and do a full review of Madison. And one of the things that came out of it was the need for, you know, consistent branding, which you hear often, whether it is more often in the private sector, but certainly very helpful in for municipalities. So it looks now we're up and running.
So we'll, we'll fly through the presentation, and yes, this is coming off the heels of that research study, and we built upon that.
Robert, you have to get closer to them, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Thanks. Okay. Just quickly, what we're going to cover here, the timeline that we went through, we had a pretty rigid process and an amazing committee and group of people assembled by Lisa Ellis to work on this with us. We're going to talk about the Madison story and how we pulled that together, and then obviously the creative, which you, I'm sure you've all had a sneak peek of that. We did a lot of social, what's called social listening, reviewing the history of this town, reviewing what people talk about, how people feel, and wanted to put together the story of Madison and what that stands for today. We did creative development, received feedback from the committee in what we call round one. And then we took that back and did revisions, agreed on some programming priorities, and took a look at what's out there in Madison, and put together the final creative, and we'll share all that with you. And then we have the final Madison playbook, which is sort of the guidebook for as these elements are used, how to use them, so that you're not doing this every other year, or you're not, you know, it's how do we unify, because now is the time to unify. Little bit of industry speak here that I'll go through quickly, but when you're talking about a brand, you want to talk about various elements, the vision, like what are we all wishing for Madison and what are we hoping for? How are we going to do that with our mission, our values, our culture? We need to acknowledge all this as we're building the brand. This is what we stand for. Our voice, our attributes, things, how we are perceived when people talk about our town. And then we get into the visual identity, which is way more than just a logo. So we go around the circle. So this was a summary. To try and keep our history succinct is not easy because it is very rich, but since the 1700s, Madison has evolved with the times. Madison has a rich history of philanthropists, commerce, food, railroads, religion, immigration, education, and politics. History continues to be written every single day we are here, with new multi-dwelling buildings, celebrity retail, technology, food and healthcare needs of the current and future populations of residents and businesses. Brands help to answer what it means to live, work, or even just visit Madison. Specifically, as towns and locations solidify their respective reputations, this isn't something that's unique to Madison. This is happening across the country where towns are trying to brand themselves. Madison leaders have identified that now is the time to unify our voice as a way to keep our town flourishing, attract new businesses and residents, encourage more dining, shopping experiences downtown, maintain Madison as a top choice, as we saw in the magazine. All this while Madison strives to meet the needs of existing residents, businesses, and organizations. One phrase that we thought captured a lot of what we saw and what we feel, we all feel when we live here, is people come to Madison for the character of its history and stay for the promise of their future. They really love the history, they love our downtown, and they're here to build their own forward future. So distilling this into our vision and mission, and I have some definitions here, our vision. So this is what we all do every single day to strive for a better world. So we want to advance Madison as one of the best places in New Jersey for individuals, families, organizations, and businesses to thrive. We're starting to see evidence of that. Takes time to build these things up. It has always been great, but we need to make sure that we're building the foundation for the future of that. Our mission, how are we helping to achieve our vision? So we would like to share the story that is the magic of Madison, leverage the foundational strengths of the community to nurture productive and thoughtful growth. Our values and our culture, what Madison stands for. These values lead the culture, drive decisions and behavior, and these are things to always go back to as you're making decisions. For our community, we are seen as welcoming, approachable, green. There's a lot of pride in our town, there's no secret there. Our history, our passion, and our spirit. For commerce is very entrepreneurial here, as well as we have corporate businesses as well. Relationships flourish here, family, friends, neighbors. You can't go somewhere without seeing somebody you know. Safety, which was a topic already tonight, helpful, watchful, caring, and diversity. We are multi-generational, we have various cultures here, and we strive to be inclusive. So what does this sound like? And what does all this mean? So when we're putting together communications, when we're looking to talk about our town to a magazine, to a publication, to market for businesses to come here and, and help our population, the voice of Madison is welcoming, honest, and trustworthy. Madisonians are passionate about our town, we value our history, and are driven to maintain a contemporary community that evolves and enriches lives with variety. Madisonians care deeply about politics, education, arts, food, culture, and its people. Madison came of age on a foundation of entrepreneurial spirit and philanthropic heart. This pride lives in all the activities and the people who create and deliver them. So this building in and of itself is a great example of that philanthropic heart. And our rose, history of our rose farms was a big nod to the entrepreneurial spirit that still lives today, evolved in different businesses. Before we get into the creative, I just want to talk about the programming, what we call programming priorities, and where there are opportunities to really refine and evolve what, how we portray our town. We have various messages, as we see, and what we call environmental signage. So our welcome signage, or what we call gateway signage as well, parking signage, directional signage, destination signs, pedestrian signs. There are opportunities there to unify that for when people are coming to, to and through our town. Our digital footprint, all of our, our websites, our social media pages, to have some consistency there and to bring these values and these words to life in this view. And our borough seal, we took a look at that as well as we were going through this process to just see, it's not broken, we don't need to fix it, but how can we just touch it up and polish it up a little bit? And it would be used limited, in a limited way, which we can, we'll share. Next, I'll have Chris talk about the creative and her awesome work.
How do I click? Okay, so we started out bringing concepts together, getting feedback from the committee, you know, showing them applications for a brand, how it would play out on various things, like Vicki talked about, through communications, how it would play out in signage. Does this brand mark, which has a very big job of somewhat representing Madison, but also considering that our brand is really our whole voice that we're using to represent Madison? So it's, it is, yes, a logo, but it's, it's a representation that's going to provide recognition and recall. When you see it, you think of Madison, you think of the memories that you have from Madison, you think of what Madison means to you. And then every time you see this mark, you identify it with Madison, you're not having to, you know, pull different images here and there. This is, this says Madison. This is what somebody is going to identify with our town when they see it. I just put together various applications when it's going to be needed, you know, in one color, in multi-color, for when it's being put into pieces for media use. So that previous page was the primary logo, this is what we call like the secondary logo, when you don't want to shrink down something that's big and you need to use it long, or when you want to use a simplified version. They all represent our brand identity, they all say Madison. There's different elements to some of them. You're not seeing just one look that always says Madison, it's going to have kind of like a group feel to it, but they're all part of our brand, they all mark our brand. The seal is something that Vicki talked about. We, it would be used just in government applications when something gets the official, you know, watermark or stamp. We've just updated it a little bit, there were some comments that, you know, that they wanted a new rose, and so we incorporated the seal as well so that we have a unified look, but it's only going to be used for, you know, those specific incidents where something needs to be marked as official government usage. Everything else will fall under the Madison umbrella, and we've created what we call a style guide that, like Vicki said, will really outline the uses, so nobody's going to be confused of when do we use the seal, when do we use the long format, you know, how, how do we use this new imagery that's been given to us? These are just some applications of the brand that we put together for the committee just to show them, you know, it's all, it's all concepts, nothing has been designed yet for any of these pieces, but just to show, you know, the fluidity of it and, and how easily it can adapt to various elements, whether it, you know, be something very small, it still is recognizable, still stands out, or something very large, like a banner, just to show, you know, the versatility of the mark. And that's it. So, yeah, I don't know if you want to go through that, or... Oh, okay. Yeah, this is basically if anybody wanted to see it up close and personal, we had done this for the committee to show them the final marks.
Thank you. So the, the process obviously is very thorough. Subcommittee of DDC that, that worked on this and then made a recommendation back to DDC. Subcommittee had representations very broadly, and it's, I think, a great outcome. So questions or comments from council, and then talk about process.
I just want to say thank you. I think you guys put in a lot of work and you did a good job. And I like, this to me is what shows it best. The board's great, but showing in the Borough of Madison Parks and Rec how you can make it green, and it's the same logo, but it fits the park and rec, I think makes a visual impact that helps me, because I know I liked the green around the seal, but to see that it can be in different ways, but still say the Madison there, and it means Madison. So thank you.
Maureen?
Yeah, I, and just to come up with, Deb, as well, what I, what I like is what I think is going to come next, which is the style book, where we determine that, you know, if this is what you use for this situation, and so people aren't coming up with all new things, we become a cohesive one voice, speaking as one voice. And, and, and it's, you know, it, it harks back to the past, but it represents our future as well. So I really like it.
Comments or... And I think one of the, one thing we're looking for tonight is a consensus that this is good to move forward, we can start rolling it out. And then I think we should work on a timeframe for rolling out. If, if we were a, rebranding a company, you know, I was, when I was with the Y, the National Y, did a complete rollout, and it was, you know, this is what it's going to be, and it was like an overnight transition. And certainly when Coca-Cola made that fateful idea of come out with new Coke, you know, it was all of a sudden, this is a new can, and so on. But I think here, as a municipality, we probably might look at it being phased in over time, not too long of a time, because they don't want to have that, branding is far more effective if it's consistent. So for 10 years out, and we still have old stuff out there, that's not too effective. Correct. Just acknowledging that you're nodding their heads there. So that was just some quick thoughts on that. Ostry and Carmella?
Okay, so I have a question. Have we, I mean, we're doing this presentation here before the council, which is great, but we've now, we've got to have buy-in by all the department heads. Have, have we done presentations to them? Have they had some input so that they're not like, wait a minute, you're taking away my logo and you want me to use your logo, that kind of thing? So we have a smooth transition? How is that working? Okay.
And I think part of the concept, and it will take a whole lot of handholding, is if you're going to be branded, you need to have a quick look, that is Madison. So the idea that, you know, different departments have, want to hold on to different ways, will take a lot of handholding.
Right. That's, that's only the reason why I was asking if, if it would be wise to give them the opportunity to remark on it, so it's not like a done deal, you know, just get input from that group. I don't know if that's...
And it certainly would be valuable if we, we don't want to go too far for this and find out there's a certain requirement for police logos or so on, so.
Right.
Carmella and then Pat?
Yeah, I, I just want, you know, part of your presentation that I noticed, you had one, one item that talked about every single one of the patches. Are you, are you considering like each one of the patches, which you see, you have the police patch up there? I mean, that, that's a very distinct patch, and it goes on a uniform that is, is that color. Same way with fire department, which is a little more red, you know, et cetera. Is that, are those going to change as well, or is it just this type of branding that you're doing?
This is what, you know, we're kind of saying the future. These are concepts to show if you decide that, you know, the town of Madison wants to redo, you know, the signage or the, you know, logo that's on the trucks or the badges, there are ways to implement the seal if they decide to do that. Nothing's been, you know, approved or designed yet, but it's certainly something that's, you know, out there to help with this big umbrella called Madison and everything that falls within it. So, you know, of course, you know, it'll be taken into consideration, like different aspects of their colors or, you know...
And that leads to what Ostry said, is, you know, talking to department heads and whatever.
Yeah, and I believe...
They'll have, you know, they've been identified so, so many years, you know, with the, a certain patch or whatever. So I agree here that that's the next step, is to, to talk to the departments. And if I could make one comment, I love the green. I know you're, you're kind of sold on, on the black and, and whatever. I love the green. There was one, there was one particular page that had a lot of the green around it, like this Parks and Recreation. My thought is this, one of the things that we're really working on in the next couple of years is to make Madison as green as possible. And psychologically, if we see more green, I think psychologically, I, I don't know, I may be wrong, but to me, that's, that's how I, I see it. It's something we're trying to attain in the next couple of years, so, just a thought.
And Pat?
So actually, just before I start on my stuff for what Carmella was talking about, if I understand this correctly, for the police department patch, what you did was just change the rows out, so... the rows out, so it would be the same style rows that you have everywhere else?
Again, I just put something together to say, if we were to use this brand identity, this is the same style rows that we have consistency across the board.
Yeah.
You know, this is Chris saying, this is an idea that I have, but just to show how it's the, you know, the logo can apply to many different things.
But it's, it's not a drastic change, what you're demonstrating is not a drastic change of the...
It's what I would call maybe, you know, slightly more posh version of what we already have, that's a little easier to reproduce, basically, but it's very similar, and everything else about it is exactly the same. So I think when we get to that point, you know, we cross that bridge of what we need to do for the badges.
Okay. And in terms of the green, in some respects, I agree with Carmella. The one thing I'm always concerned about when it comes to some of this is, when it comes to branding, you know, if it's on written material, whatever, it's fine, but when it comes to signs, the thing that's most important to me is being able to read it from as far away as possible. So I appreciate the green in some cases, but I think where you have the highest contrast on signs, we're better off, especially when you try to direct people to parking, or as you're coming into town and you're trying to catch their eye. I've, I've seen a lot of bad signs over the years that you just can't read unless you get right up against them, and even at 30 miles an hour, it's, it's almost impossible. I, I can't really comment on the graphics, I, I thought they were interesting, but I do like the idea that we're going to have a sort of cohesive brand, because if right now you look at, I think I had asked Lisa to provide us with examples of what we already have, and it's kind of all over the map, depending on who did it and when they did it. So I think that's great. What I would like to see though is sort of a, a timeline and a budget of what it's going to cost us to convert everything. You know, paper and stuff that we print ourselves, you know, we can probably switch that over fairly quickly. When it comes to repainting vehicles, I think a lot of that, we should probably say, you know, over the next some number of years, we'll let the vehicles that are going to age out, get the new logo, and then maybe, maybe pick a point in time where if it hasn't aged out, you know, we just swap the logo out, so we do maintain a consistent feel. It doesn't take a decade or two, because some of our vehicles last for a long time. And they are one of the more prominent places you'll actually see this, because they're driving around town all the time.
Yeah, that's consistent with my, my thoughts. The, the other thing, as far as rollout, right now, we, we have at least two versions of business cards, if not more. There's a, okay, yeah, there's, there's probably, yeah, and that's, you know, a fairly simple one to, as people need to reorder, but the fact that we have multiple versions now is crazy, so it's...
Business cards are passe anyway, so I wouldn't even bother to replace them. I have boxes and boxes I've had over the years. I think I gave one out recently for the first time in years. I give it, you put it in your phone.
Oh, so I have a, I have a quick question. What's, what's the shelf, what's the shelf life of a, of a rebrand, of a brand? Like, how long, I mean, like, are we going to be, are going to be back here doing this again in 10 years?
No, please no.
This is the first rebranding since 1889, so...
I, I want to hear your thoughts too, but I mean, if you look at some of the most iconic brands, the reason that the brands are around for so long and maintain their originality, or what, you know, is that they were stewarded. You know, they had people that maintained them and make sure that what was originally designed and the intention was there, and that you didn't start pulling it apart and make it a patchwork across products or lines of distribution. And that's, that's the hard part and the easy part. You know, we're giving you a guidebook that explains everything, the right colors, the fonts, et cetera. If you want to start deviating from that, yeah, we'll be back sooner than later, or someone else will be back sooner than later, hope not, but the, the bigger you make the brand, the harder it is to change it. Nike can't redesign their check for a good reason. Coca-Cola is script forever, you know, so there's reasons for that.
Okay, thank you.
Do they usually make somebody the brands are in town?
I don't usually recommend that, and it, because if you have to, if you have to corral people to follow rules, that's something else, but, but I think you do need to have people who are stewards of the brand. If it's one person, if it's one person, it's a thankless job. If everybody agrees, and this is what they believe in and they bought in, then it's all of our jobs to preserve and maintain what we bought into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what I'm hearing right now is what we want is a, a rollout schedule and a anticipated budget based on, and I think the feat you've, for as far as putting together that rollout schedule, you heard the feedback as far as, you know, printed materials would be sooner. The idea of vehicles would be over, you know, figure out, as Pat said, the typical life, but put a, draw a line in the sand. I think the, we had a, as I mentioned before, we have that, in the consent agenda, the resolution related to a landscaper that's supporting a park, and what's happening right now is we see their front lawn sign, you know, that they put in a yard that to do in, which is not appropriate for a park, and so I would love to see something like that happen sooner as opposed to later, because we need to do it now anyway, so we'd have a consistent sign that recognizes the generosity of a, of a vendor, and also recognizes that it's, it is Madison, that's a borough, borough property. Other things that we need right now?
Parking signs, park directing, where to go. I mean, I think some of the other towns are ahead of us on that.
Yeah, so yeah, the...
It should be a priority.
Yeah, wayfinding, signs, that consistency, the...
Yeah, we put this first.
Yep, the welcome, a consistent welcome.
One, one other question, I think you guys had also, or somebody had shown us some of the other organizations in town, like the DDC, the Chamber, the Amulets Corps, they're technically not borough, well, the DDC is, but the other ones are not really borough entities, but they typically use the, some type of rose in their design. Do we try to get them to do something similar, or do we prefer to keep this exclusive to the borough? What's usually the best practice on that?
Chamber of Commerce, for example.
Do you want to ask, or you want me to?
I mean, I really like your branded house explanation, so, do you want to go?
I think there's, there's different approaches on all of this, but I think that we are a branded house, but I think each, each product line, if you will, if you want to use a typical breakdown, has their own personality. And I think the language that we're providing here, they can work in concert together, but I think it needs to be done the right way. I wouldn't want the Chamber of Commerce to use this green, and then this kind of sort of this rose, and then that's when you start getting all like crazy. This is its own entity, and that is our umbrella, if you will.
Okay.
And then everyone else can have their, their way to go.
In the style guide, you've shown ways to do like a lockup where it's the primary logo, it's a Madison townwide event, but it's sponsored by Drew and DDC.
Right here.
Then, then there's ways to show, you know, it's, it becomes, you know, big logo, 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 but everybody does that. Unfortunately, that's the way, you know, it's not, as a designer, I don't love the way it looks, but, you know, there's ways to, to show that it's an overall entity, but then to give everyone in the town of Madison that has the rose in their logo right now, our version of the rose, I don't, I don't think that's something that we've considered, you know, every business that uses a rose to make everybody try to conform to this. This is really, you know, our Madison town logo.
So then we're better off saying, please don't use our rose, use your own, because we, we appreciate the fact that you're using a rose, but we want to keep our rose distinct to the...
Yeah, and I mean, in like, a lot of towns, in, in, in pages, you know, they kind of have the official laws of using this identity, and it's, one of them is you cannot, you know, take, this belongs to, this is our official...
Trademark.
You know, you can't, without permission, or whatever, you're not allowed to use this mark, you know, unless...
It will, yeah, it will start to get diluted as the master brand, if you will.
Okay.
So, and we show it in this, again, it was just a comp of an example, but the farmer's market, how different logos can coexist, need to coexist, because lots of things have different supporters, and that's great. But it also shows that this is an official borough event, endorsed by, sponsored by however.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So if we answer, you know, put together this plan, I think, or we'd point where we'd come back with a resolution that lays out the plan, along with, that approves the branding and, and the strategy. Okay. All right. Thank you so much for your work. It was great working with you and continue to work with you.
Thank you very much. So excited.
Thank you. It was fun. Thank you.
Community Arts Center, Eric.
I will use the mic, I may not need it, but I'll use it anyway. I am the, Eric Heffan, I'm the Director of Arts and Events for the Borough, and I just wanted to, when I first came here, I was just astounded at what is in this town. What really caught me by surprise was this is the only municipality in all of Morris County that is, has every artistic discipline represented within its borders.
Hmm. Wow.
Isn't that amazing? I went through the town looking at where arts are, where arts can be, where I could present and raise the profile of the arts in Madison. So obviously, you look at the schools, two very nice, large-sized spaces, a dynamite 1930s vaudeville stage over at that junior school, which we'll address a little later. I looked over at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, lovely cavernous there for some nice music. You got short stories where they now have a little coffee shop, they serve sandwiches and coffee and donuts, et cetera. And of course, studio yoga. Who knew that on the second floor of this gorgeous building are two absolutely beautiful dance studios, in which they have a few yoga classes. Drip Coffee, for especially the Holiday Arts Festival, and also for a coffee house reminiscent of the old Iron Horse up in North Hampton, or up in the old college towns of the Five Sisters. Nicole's Dance Studio, brand new to the town, but I knew Nicole from East Hanover. Grace Church, beautiful parish hall there, and of course, the Chase Room at the library. And of course, I'm leaving out the universities, and I'm sure there are a dozen other places where arts can thrive. However, this is the most important one. This is the new Madison Community Arts Center. I don't know how many of you have been in that building, or take a look at that building. I call it the most beautiful conference room I've ever seen in my life. It is unique in that it can be a multi-functional performing and presenting arts center with a little bit of help. The entire floor is sprung, for dancers, for minds, et cetera. I just had Carolyn Dorfman in there the other day, the, basically the quintessential choreographer in this state, and she's astounded. She's looking at it to maybe be her permanent rehearsal space. You'll notice this little arc here, I didn't bring my pointer, that little sail out there, that's over an outdoor stage, fully powered, for outdoor concerts. The Into Yellow People's Picnic was out there, my very first event here before I was even hired. Remarkable, had a guitar player and a fiddler. I was in the, up in my little box office, which is a, not a very big space, but I was listening to music, and I have a propensity to what they call butt dial people, or pocket dial people. And I'm listening to music, and I go, there's iHeartRadio again. So I check my phone, there's no music. I look out the window, there's a guy, maybe late teens, early twenties, and a stool, and a guitar, sitting on that outdoor stage, playing music. That's what it could be for. You have the space, as I said, in there. You'll see a couple of pictures, there's the White Party that the Italia, Healthy Italia did on the lower right-hand side, and another rental on the lower left-hand side. We were able to pick up 100 portable theater chairs from the Actors Theater of Charlotte. You'll see two of them in the bottom of that slide. They are cushioned, they are foldable, they weigh about 30 pounds apiece, they retail for over $200 apiece, we picked them up for $20 apiece. The glass doors that you see in the upper right-hand side, those doors open up, that when I, when I took that tour with Lisa and/or John Petrovsky, I was astounded. That's indoor/outdoor stuff. And if the night, if the night is right, we'll have that indoor/outdoor stuff coming up very, very shortly. This is what we need, to get us out of that beautiful conference room. First thing we need is what's called a grid. A grid, basically, think of a crossword puzzle, it's big metal squares, and attaches to the ceiling. This is pictures out of the Berlin Theater's rehearsal space at the McCarter Theater, I was down there a couple of months ago. On this grid are theatrical lights. On this grid will be a speaker system and sound system. Going around the edges of the grid, and the edges of the building, the plan in my head is to have curtains, a curtain track run along this side, along the long side, along this side, so that when we hang works of art from Madison artists, and we have a renter or we have a performance, they don't want to have the art as part of their performance, we can shutter that off, without having to take the art down, put the art back up again, take the art down, put it back up again. And it's to showcase Madison artists. This is, I'm very Madison-focused with this, with this possibility. The other thing is we have a dressing room in there. It's a small dressing room, it was designed by the Playwrights Theater, which usually doesn't have a whole lot of heavy casts. So we need some mirrors, and we need some lights, and we need a countertop. It'll seat about five or six performers, and then we have a hallway right outside where we can also put another mirror up and another counter, in case we have a little few more artists that are a part of all this. How are we going to pay for it? We're going to start on September 21. Madison Swings. This is an event that will be held at the junior school on that 1930s fabulous vaudeville stage, and the acoustics in that place are just amazing. All of these artists, with the exception of the one on the far right, are all Madison residents, they are all professionals that live here in Madison, Grover, I think, doesn't live in Madison, but we all know Jerry Vezza does. And the gal on the far right, Gay Willis, is a very dear friend of mine, who heard that I was involved in this product and said, yes, I will gladly sing for you. And the spring fundraiser, Bob Cuccioli, has already said, I will come and sing for you, Eric. Kara Cooper is a Broadway star, she just finished, just left the prom. Mark Delavan is a soloist with the Met Opera, with the San Francisco Opera, with the Washington Opera. And of course, Tom Sellwood, you may know, runs a vocal studio, but did you know that he appeared on Broadway and appeared in The West End, primarily in Carousel? Gay's claim to fame, aside from being a Tony winner for the music of Andrew Lloyd Webber, is that she has the longest-running Magnolia in Showboat. She has played that character over 1,000 times. After that, we're going to expand some more programming subtly, as I spoke to, to Lisa and to Jim and to Ray and to Bob, I'm a walker, I'm a crawler, a walker, a runner, and a sprinter. So we're going to slowly start programming some, some other alternative entertainment. Children's Theater, Friday, November 8. That's the day when all the teachers are supposed to be in Atlantic City. This is a lovely lady that I've used many times, she is a fabulous with the kids. This is a pre-K to maybe grade two, grade three, and it's all hands-on, it's all interactive. The first show is called Fun and Frolic in Colonial Times, she'll bring all these old games and hoops and things, and then Pioneer Travels, and a very reasonably priced at $15. For the adults, not blue, maybe, on November 9, The Flip Side. This is an improvisational group, and I'm going to be working with Jamie Conroy on this, who also is part of Step Right Up in Town, and maybe involve some of her kids in the improv. But this will be primarily for adults to just come and laugh and have a good time. We have the possibility of two theater series, the first possibly funded fully, called The 1940s Radio Hour, that will be in December. We're still working on, I have to work on royalty associations with that. And Souvenir, if you don't know the story of Souvenir, it's about Florence Foster Jenkins. Florence Foster Jenkins was a socialite in the 20s and the 30s, very wealthy, and she would throw parties for her friends in Manhattan, where she would entertain them. She would sing to them, but she's 100% tone deaf. Very fun piece. And why these two pieces? Because we don't have the theatricality yet in that building. We don't have the lights, we don't have the sound, we don't have the, the grid. These pieces do not need that. And one of the closest friends that I have, Rio Clemente, will come and do a concert for us on December 2nd, it's a holiday concert, he calls it Impressa Rio, he's nicknamed the Bishop of Jazz, so he calls his band The Bishop and His Abbotz. This intimate evening series is one that I really want to present as we're moving forward, because that space will only allow about 135 to maybe 100 and a half, if Captain Ed approves, in theater or concert setting. So here you're going to have a performer that's right next to Mr. Rowe over there, and we're watching him perform, and we're right next to him. I think that would be, thank you, do play.
No. Just the radio.
Oh, thank you, thank you. So, that in a nutshell, is, is what we're trying to present. The center is being used, we are trying to get it used more often, we have... The center is being used. We are trying to get it used more often. We have a lot of meetings taking place in there. Healthy Italia just had their White Party there this past Saturday. The Tri-Town 55-plus Club meets there, the Garden Club has met there. We have the high school coming in. They're doing some kind of a bingo for senior council. And they're getting some outside interest. The Arts for the People is going to move their event from book, I always called it short books, from the short book story, to the Madison Arts Center, because they've outgrown it. Another advantage that we have. So I will entertain questions and...
Great presentation. That slide was showing that we are, have more arts in this town than anywhere else in Morris County. It was very impressive. That will keep us number one for decades to come. I, one, you showed the picture of the piano. I don't know if you told the story.
Oh, no, I didn't.
That Jerry Vezza was able to acquire that and...
Yes. That is a Steinway that belonged to the rehearsal pianist for the Met. Jerry, as you know, is a well-established jazz performer, but also maintains pianos and tunes, and this was one of his customers. And the gentleman was done, he had retired, and he couldn't sell the piano, so he wanted to know if there was a place that would accept the piano. And we put it in there, and the fire captain said, yes, Eric, where you want to park it is perfect, just park it right there in that corner. And mentioning the piano, it was just tuned today, because next Monday night is the first rehearsal for the fundraiser. The fundraiser, as John had mentioned, will start at the junior school. And then if you wish to join us up in the after-party, to meet the cast, meet the performers, talk about the center, learn about the center, talk to me about my vision about the center, that would be after the performance, which will probably get around 9:30, quarter to 10. And I would hope that we would have the support of the council individually, with tickets, with friends. This is your art center. I'm just here to guide it. So if we can get some people to make it work.
Looks like great things to come, and bringing people into downtown, which was the intent of the center, so.
Amen.
Great. Other comments or questions for Eric?
I was just going to ask if we can tell them that we would like to use it this year for our political forum. Every year, the League of Women Voters holds a, it's not really a debate, it's more like getting to know the candidates. And we're hoping to be able to use it one night in October, when we can, the six candidates this year can all find a date that works for us and for the League.
Just call me, and we'll arrange that in a heartbeat. We have a lot of equipment there, meaning tables, chairs, et cetera, so we can easily accommodate that.
And 150, I think, is definitely not going to be a problem.
Yeah.
The cushions will be appreciated for the long...
The curtains will come in here.
Well, we have curtains now in front of those glass doors.
Yeah.
No, no, the real important question is, do you have a big hook?
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Well, that fundraiser would be a great center.
Thank you.
All right, we are now moving on to ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinances scheduled for a hearing were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held Monday, August 12, 2019. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to members of the general council.
I call up ordinance 42.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 56 entitled Alcoholic Beverages to amend the hours for sale of alcohol beverages for on-premise consumption.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I'll move ordinance 42-2019. Second.
Any council discussion? Again, this relates to Sundays. We'll allow brunches to start at 10:00 AM if they so desire. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 43-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 43-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $15,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for emergency replacement of fire engine one transmission.
Open the hearing for ordinance 43. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 43-2019.
I second the motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 43-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to the second of invitations for discussion. This is when you may comment on anything. Same guidelines are in place. State your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Three minutes.
But I will give you a one-minute grace period if you can't do that.
But both of these topics are so my topics. My name is Melanie Tamazowski, and my, the pens don't work. All right, another pen. Thanks. I live at 46 Dean Street in Madison. So you guys know I'm the owner of Tivoli Creative Design Studio, and I've been looking at roses for the last five years, trying to rebrand this town. Thank you to Chris and Vicky for doing an amazing job. One of the things you guys may not completely understand, and I want to try and explain, because you guys were kind of saying that they were presenting ideas to you. They were just giving you the possibilities of what the logo can do. When the why changed, they didn't ask the head of this department and the head of this department if they can change what their department's logo looked like. I don't think that the borough heads and the head of the DPW are going to have a major problem with this, but at the same time, it's going to be done in such a gradual way. When you talk about cost, sure, let her head, all of those things. But what we've talked about constantly is, we can slowly integrate this logo into everything. As a person who does a lot of design for this town, I can't tell you how many different things and how difficult it is to rebrand, to brand things now. The resolution of the logos are old. The truck logo, you cannot find one in print anywhere in this town. The burning bush that is the rose on the borough one, that, this all started because we needed to redo the carpet when you first walk in. So now visualize that rose on that carpet when you guys first walk in. So I think that the cost may not be easy to come up with immediately, because we're going to slowly bring it in. Yes, the wayfinding signs, we can definitely come up with the price for that. But one of the things that they talked about with our department, with our committee constantly, was that this isn't, we're not going to take every single thing and use this font on everything. It's about integrating that in the senior center, in the farmer's market stuff. And I, we're very excited. So the two of you did an awesome job. Second topic, Madison Swings. Eric Haven is the greatest thing we have hired in this town. I'm working very closely with him with this building, and as a person who owns Madison Mud, that you did not put up in your thing up there. I can't tell you, I'm, no cross talk.
We had the mugs.
Either way, I can't tell you how exciting it is. As a person who's also worked on things for MACA, Madison Open for Art, the Banner Program, no one knows all of these amazing arts things that happen in this town. And now if we can start branding it under that as well, that this is the place, I was going to do a ceramic art show, I pulled out, I'm sorry. I'm going to do it next year. But to see that all of these things can be done in this town, within walking distance of this town, you know, all of the places, like, all of the events we've all wanted to do, but the space just wasn't big enough, this has such potential. So, all of you guys got mailers in your mailboxes, and it's all over social media. So we can ask everyone in this town to share the Madison Swings event, to make it incredibly successful. Look, I'm doing so good, and I'm covering two topics. That would be really helpful, because I, as a Madison resident, as an artist, think this is one of the greatest things to happen to this town, and Eric Haven as well.
Thank you very much. With 50 seconds to spare. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward.
Deb Starker, 30 Beverly Road. So what she said. Word for word. I mean, I was on the committee for the Downtown Development Commission. We really worked very, very hard, but Chris and Vicky did an extraordinary job. They listened. They are, they put something together that is cohesive, and that I think is going to really do this town proud. Being the best town in New Jersey, I think we deserve to have a really wonderful branding, and I think that will really help us an awful lot. So number two, the Madison Cultural Arts, the, now, what are we calling it now? I am also on the board of MACA, and so this is something that we have really tried to do for a very, very long time, is have something and bring it all together. Eric's image up there about all the different arts and cultural organizations and institutions that we have in Madison is outstanding. We've always known that. And now we have an opportunity to really have a place where we can actually present some of these. So I just want, you know, to reiterate, you know, how proud I am to be a part of MACA, to be a part of the Downtown Development Commission, and obviously to be a part of the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We move on to introductory ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for first reading have a hearing date set for Monday, September 23, 2019. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 44, 2019. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 185 of the Borough Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic to Delete Valley Road as a Through Street.
Mayor, I move ordinance 44-2019.
I second that.
And this is to, we've had some concerns about the traffic going on Valley too quickly. When it was designated for as a through street, what that allowed them to do was have stop signs at each intersection along Valley without having individual ordinances. By removing this status, we can reevaluate how Valley really should be done to recognize that as a neighborhood. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ordinance 46-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $100,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Department of Public Works Recycling Center project.
Mayor, I move ordinance 46-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Again, as there was the, Tom has left with a question about the increase, the costs have come up, but this will be, give us a state-of-the-art recycling center without having people, having to go into the John Street site, which has been a problem, and will probably help us with liability also in the long term. So. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Right. Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move R 253 through R 257, 2019, and R 259 through R 266, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion, or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
So, yes to all, but I'll recuse myself from R 263.
Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will clerk please read the voucher registry?
Current fund is $6,662,486. General capital fund, $227,170. Electric operating fund, $886,213.57. Electric capital fund, $32,533.67. Water operating fund, $29,391.84. Water capital fund, $48,802.30. And trust, $317,038.94. Total is $8,203,637.92.
Mayor, I move approval of vouchers.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
All right, under new business, I would like to make the following appointment. This is the mayor's appointment to the housing authority, so no confirmation from the council is required. It is for Gary Ruckel's house, Fox Chase Road. He is current commissioner, so reappointment for a five-year term through August 10, 2024. And like to announce the following appointment, council's appointment to the Madison Housing Authority, requiring council confirmation. That is for Mark McBride, McBride, Prospect Street, and this is for a five-year term through August 10, 2024.
I'll make a motion that the council approve Mark McBride for a position on the Madison Housing Authority Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So you're already retired. Too much?